See a friend I hadn't seen in a long time.
Yeah. And I was on the program. Got a second. I was on the, uh, panel and I was surprised how small it was because usually it's like, you know, a hundred plus people. And it was a very small class this time. Yeah, it was rather small. But they had one opening and so someone got it.
The one that probably really needed it.
The only person I know that wasn't going to be here is Carl, so I don't know.
I'm out of town.
Okay. Yeah, Gary did say he was coming. Okay.
All right, it is about thirty, twenty-five seconds off, so I guess we can wait twenty-five seconds. We already are. Oh, it's on. This red light here.
Oh, that's us.
So now it's on.
It's on.
Okay.
Okay, it is six fifteen. We'll call this meeting to order. Has everybody taken a chance to look over our DD minutes from November? If so, do I hear a motion?
I saw a move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we've got a motion to approve. Do we have a second? Motion and a second, all in favor? All right, moving down to financial report.
Uh, Mr. Chair, um, Carl isn't, obviously he's a CPA, so this is busy time, so he, he's not going to make the meeting. Um, I, we didn't have any transactions in the DDA account this month. Um, as you know, we don't really do a lot of business, so all the finances are the same. He didn't give me an updated report, but it's not any different than the last time.
All right, move on down number four, downtown development. That's yours.
Yeah, I don't know what that is, but no. Uh, I guess we could go to the old business. That's all, that's all I got.
Go to the old business then. Discussion of facade grant for Jerry Cole.
Yep, we have, uh, actually two facade grant applications are both in the packet. Uh, the first one was for Jerry Cole. Uh, he's wanting to, um, replace the door, uh, the garage door on the West Wilson side of his building where Amy Brown State Farm is. Um, and so he's provided some information. He also submitted a, a application for the exterior improvement grant for the Main Street Board. And I also included that information in the packet just for, just for your information. Um, the Main Street Board did recommend, uh, well-
If you got copies of that, we didn't get the packet.
Right, oh, well, you can, I'm sorry. I emailed it, it late, so I apologize. And I thought Lisa was making some copies, but, um, no worries, we got copies here of it. You can use-
All right, Chris.
Bill, do you have one?
Do I have a phone? No.
Where'd I get y'all the tablets and y'all could just, uh, move, roam around with them?
Chris, I'm just now mastering smoke signals.
I have a training course for y'all.
So we've got two for-
Yeah, um, one is for Jerry Cole and the other one, uh, Ben-
Don Hutchins.
Yeah, Don, Don. Uh, he's the one, he came and talked to us and, uh, Bill had mentioned that he was renovating the property there, uh, right, uh, next to, um, and I can't even think of the name of the building.
I'm not sure what the name of the building is.
Yeah, I'm trying to think. The, um, the antique store there-
Trader Jack?
The Haven, yes, the Haven.
Right next to Annie's Harris-
Right, right.
Jack Barber's whole piece of property?
I don't know, yeah, okay.
Yes, it is.
Uh, and he's requesting assistance with, um, replacing window. I guess somebody shot a BB or something at it, put a little hole in it. Uh, and then he's already painted the building, um, so this would just be for window repairs and, uh, some renovation of the door.
Does this need to go to, for the historical committee first?
Yeah, I told both of them, well, I would think that you can approve it contingent on historic preservation signing off on it. So he doesn't have to wait a whole nother thirty days to come back to this board. Um, so we could approve him contingent that he gets, uh, approval from historic preservation and then he can, they can both worry about getting it on the historic preservation. Yeah, that, but that's his writing. That doesn't necessarily-
No, it's your writing.
No. No, just because they put it in there, that doesn't mean it's true. Uh, so, um, so then that would go to historic preservation and, and we could do it like that if that's the will of the DDA. And we wouldn't fund any money until we get that signed off for historic preservation.
And it has to be approved by us, too, isn't that right, Bill?
Well, we can't approve it unless they approve it.
Yeah.
Because that is step one, and you know, if they don't approve it, then we really can't approve it.
Right, which is why I was saying we can still approve the funds contingent upon historic preservation approval.
And that comes out of Tracy's DDA account, right?
Right.
And we've got enough to cover those two of it. Twenty, twenty?
I think they're both twenty-five.
Well now, uh, Mr. Hutchins here, Chris, this is approximately cost of total improvements, twenty-eight hundred?
Right.
And he wants twenty-two hundred. We, we can only give him fourteen.
Half of the twenty-eight, right?
Half of the twenty-eight. We, we can match him dollar for dollar up to five thousand. But the tw- but the twenty-eight hundred, he says, is the total cost.
Okay.
So we could go fourteen, but we can't go twenty-two on it.
Well, you can do fourteen.
And then on Japples for Jerry Cole's, he's requesting- It would be half of that then. So we've got that to cover it, right, Tracy? It's twenty-five, is that right?
Yeah, I think that, no, I just bring, I just bring the applications with the request. I don't make any, I don't alter the application, so it's up to DDA. I mean, you don't have to give them the whole amount if you don't want to. I mean, it's up to, to the DDA.
It's up to.
Yeah, yeah.
Up to, yeah.
I remember talking to, uh, to Mr. Hutchins, and this was, how many months ago was it, Chris?
It's been several, it's been at least six.
Back in the summer, I guess, wasn't it? And, uh, he, he was, uh, going to do some major work on the interior, which he needed. It needed a whole new floor, it needed, uh, replumbed, it, it needed, uh, a lot of work done on it. And as I recall our conversation, I said, if you would get us an application in, we will consider doing all of these things. Now, he painted it before we got the application. But the, uh, window he's referring to, it does have a hole in it where somebody evidently shot it with a twenty-two or, or a pellet gun or something. And he, he mentioned the door that is on the front is an antique style door, which he, he wanted to refinish back to its original condition and, uh, rehang it. So we're talking about window replacement on just one side, though, wasn't it?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, and then refinishing the door. Uh, before we approve this, I, I think we should get, uh, get what he estimates it'll cost for that. Well, he just got a total cost estimation.
Yeah.
Uh, but refinishing the door plus replacing that one piece of plate glass was basically what, what we're talking about right now, correct?
Correct, yep.
So I, before we approve any amount, I would like to see, you know, what that amount's going to be.
All right, we will, we will let them know.
Yeah, it, it included painting, it included, uh, uh- Paint, paint bricks.
Paint bricks.
Which is already done. But, but I grew, I, I recall telling him, Jody, that he needed to get his application in so we could approve it prior to any work being done.
Right, and I expressed that to him when he brought the application.
Yeah, so, so he is, uh, he hadn't followed through, uh, with that.
So we want to table that one till we-
I, I, I recommend we table it until we get, uh, get a, get a better description here.
What about Jerry Cole's then?
Chris, you said this one had not, had not gone to the historic-
It had, had not, no.
Do we have a second for that?
Hmm, wait a minute. What improvements are going to be made here? They're going to put in a glass door there?
No, uh, what you have is a two-part application. Um, his, uh, I put all the stages there. He originally was going to do it, Carl Vincent Institute that did the master plan for us, they had done some renderings for him. He then, uh, decided that they didn't want to do those renderings. They're just going to replace it with a solid garage door there. And, um, just for security purposes, um, but that's all that they're going to do is just replace that door.
So the first picture you had is the RSVP.
Right.
The second picture, he's kind of what is there and he's telling you what he's going to do. They do bronze solid panels for security where there's glass now.
Then they've changed that.
Is, is this the one he proposes to wind up with?
No, that's what the Carl Vincent Institute, he's the one that, they had Carl Vincent Institute do that. We didn't have them do that. They brought that to us and said, this is what they recommended for this side of the building.
Oh, Jerry had that done?
Uh, I think Amy Brown.
Okay.
Yeah.
Amy did.
Yeah, but, um, they ended up just coming back and saying they were going to do just a solid metal door, just like a regular traditional garage door. So it won't even be glass, um, and there should be, is there not an image of it in there? I thought I'd scanned it in. Okay. I thought I'd scanned that part in. There's an addition to that application with another picture of the door. Um, but it looks just like the one that's glass. It's a bronze color, but it's all metal. It's not glass, the door that they're proposing.
Well, now the ones that, that is there now is a metal door, right?
Right, that's correct.
All is metal door, isn't it?
Yeah, that was, that was their second proposal. The third proposal is the one that, they added additional. And I guess it didn't scan in, or it might've got stuck, papers might've got stuck when I was scanning them.
They are not adding the lighting?
No, they're just replacing the door with a solid metal door.
They are not doing, uh-
The awning and all of that, no.
So they think that, that the door is going to cost five thousand dollars?
Well, they're, well, that was- I gave, I gave Jeremiah.
Set it there.
The door is the, um, on that quote thirty-two, five eighty-five?
Wait a minute, thirty-two, five eighty-five, I, what are we talking about?
The quote, the job quote. Right. Well? Well, let's, let's table that one because apparently none of those, there's a whole nother section that got scanned. It's supposed to get scanned then. I guess it just missed the whole, the whole thing. Yeah, it's not, this is the quote for what they, when they were going to do the glass door part. Uh, the one for the metal door is different.
It's got to be different. I just put one in my house a couple of years ago from Home Depot.
Well, this one's a little bit bigger than your house, but-
Yeah, but not that much bigger.
But it's, uh, and look, I'll get that over to you all.
The lights helped out, the originals, the first one.
I can physically make those recommendations to them. What was the reason they decided not to do the, the total upgrade on this?
I, I didn't get into all the details with that, but I'm assuming it'd have to do with money, the price. And that they didn't feel like there was necessary to have all of that.
That must be yours.
Mine has a hole in it, but-
Well, if, if Jerry and Amy are just going to replace the door, what's wrong with the door that's there now, other than it's not as pretty as a new door?
Well, I think structurally there's some issues with, especially at the bottom.
I think with the bottom, yeah.
So, um, it needs to be replaced. It's just what, what are you going to require them to do when they replace it?
I mean, we're about facade improvement. This is facade repair. I mean, they're just repairing a door that's there. You guys in agreement with that? We've got help in to do, but they're going to have to repair it anyway.
This is, this is one of those kind of gray areas when you get right down, down to it. This is, this is not exactly what we had in mind when we thought up the facade grant approach. You know, a, a facade grant ideally would be changing the appearance of the outside with some upgrades to make it better for the whole downtown area. I, I have a little bit of problem with this one.
Oh, I, I, listen, I, all I do, they bring them to me.
Right.
I bring them to the board. I mean, I don't make an opinion on them one way or the other. You know, that's not, not my responsibility, um. You know, I make, if they ask me questions, I make recommendations about what I think should happen, but ultimately it's their application and, and you all can put stipulations on it however you want to. That's the purpose of you giving the money. We'll give you the money, but we want to see A, B, C, and D. So, I mean, you can say, hey, we don't mind helping do it, but we want to see this design implemented instead of what you're proposing. And that's y'all's, y'all's right to do that.
If this was my building and the door needed repair and I was renting the building out, I would take it out of my rent, rental income to fix the door. I would not expect the DDA to assist me in repairing a building. Uh, if it was a repair and upgrade, it's a whole different scenario. That's, that's just my, my feeling on it.
I was looking for improvement and, and repair. I don't, I don't think that's what the purpose of this is, is to help you with just your normal maintenance of your building.
Can you get a point to them, Chris?
Sure, so you want me to pretty much say that you prefer the rendering from the Carl Vincent Institute? And if they want to move forward with that to resubmit their application?
Maybe not a glass door, but at least the awning and the lights to go with it. You know, something that, that benefits Wilson Street and not just benefits the building itself.
So we've decided to table both of those in?
I recommend we table, yeah.
All right, we need a vote on that, Tracy? All right, moving on down to update on Welcome Center?
Yes, sir. Um, we, I sent you all, we've been talking about this for some time now. And we kind of got off track because we didn't have a meeting in December, so I've been, um, kind of just holding on to this information. We, we met with the Garland Group, uh, which is the original company, did the assessment on the, the roof of the Welcome Center. Um, and we had sent you all some information about the price quote for that. Um, that was where we got that original number of like a hundred and fifty thousand to replace the roof. Um, they have since come back with a more, uh, concrete bid. And the reason why we talked with the Gar- the Garland Group specifically is they are, um, have a state contract. And under Georgia law, municipalities can enter into a contract with, a company has a state contract without bidding the project out. Uh, they basically pre, it's basically they're pre-bidded it out and said with these companies are companies that you can utilize. The city has used the Garland Group on several of the projects in the city the last year and a half. Um, they came back with a price, um, a base price of, um, a hundred and six thousand dollars. And then they had some add-ons that they just, you just don't know until you tear the roof off. But, um, it is, uh, basically not to exceed a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, to totally replace asbestos abatement a- and all for the, um, the roof. Uh, I give this to y'all as information, um, so we can do one or two ways. We can go ahead and move forward with this company, um, if that's the will of the DDA. Or if you prefer, we could bid that project out, uh, and do a competitive bid on the market. And we're not bound to, to use the Garland Group, if that's the will.
How long would it take to bid it out?
Um, well, we'd have to get bid specs together, a bid package we had to put out. Usually give anywhere from two to four weeks, um, to get people to get a chance to look at it. And then you'd have a, an enclosed date for the bid and then we'd open the bids. I mean, it, it can be pretty time consuming, just depending on the, the complexity of the bid.
What do you pays for putting together the specs and-
That, that would be us. That would come out of the, the renovation money that, um, that basically a line of credits, well, I'm calling it. It would come out of that money.
What is this proposal based upon market experience with builders?
Yeah, that's, so Garland didn't actually do the work. They bid it out. And that's, uh, the company that they're proposing to bid it out to. That company's the one that would do the work, Ben Hill Roofing.
I'm familiar with Ben Hill also, and, uh, it could be done cheaper than Ben Hill does, I can assure you. I, I have bid out several jobs and Ben Hill's always been thirty, forty percent higher, always.
It's definitely the will of the DDA. If that's what you want to do, we can go and move-
There are local roofing companies that, that, uh, that are reputable for sure. And, uh, I just, we can always go back to this one, right?
Correct.
So if, if-
I, I, I would say that this, the, the, the bid is only valid until three thirty, well, that's sixteen, but I'm assuming they meant seventeen. Three thirty-one, seventeen.
So that, that would give us two and a half months, roughly two and a half months to get a bid package together, get it out and, and get the bids back in. Do you think that's a reasonable timeframe to do it?
I mean, we could. I mean, it's, you know-
I think we got two months.
Yeah.
We can always have a call meeting.
We can have a call meeting. And this, I mean, we've already had the survey of the roof done. So, I mean, all the, the hard parts are already done. They would just need to, you know, figure out what their, what their cost is as far as their materials and stuff like that. But the, the evaluation and assessment of the condition of the roof has already been done.
What are the qualifications that her roofer would have to have? Would he have to have any, uh, special qualifications for this job?
Well, yes, because the asbestos abatement, you have to be licensed to do that, um, and-
The old city vendor was, I think, or not doing that for us?
Yeah, I, I don't know if that would, we would necessarily have to, because this is a DDA project, not necessarily a city. Um, but, um, I mean, we could definitely, if that's one of the requirements that we want to, I mean, you could put the requirements you want in the bid document. But they'll need to be able to account for how they're going to bait the asbestos. Most general roofing contractors aren't licensed to, to remove asbestos. So they'll have to subcontract that out to another company.
For, like a vendor for the city or anyone that's going to submit a bid, I mean, there's all these requirements for bonding and insurance and, you know, everything that makes them legit. What do we have in place as a DDA if we don't go through the city?
Well, we would pu- put together our own bid package. We did a similar bid package for the, um, Hotel Motel Market study. Um, that was a DDA bid package that we agreed that we would let Carol Tomorrow do. But it had, where they had to be bonded and had to have insurance. Um, there were a lot of requirements that are in the bid document, and they will have to provide us proof that they have those things.
So we relied on Carol Tomorrow who has experience and has, probably had a form that they use to just-
No, we provided the document and gave it to Carol Tomorrow.
Oh, we provided that, the, the bid thing to her?
Correct, yes. Stacy and I worked on that.
So then you guys would work on the bid proposal for this other student?
And we'd probably get somebody from a construction standpoint to help make sure we got all of the requirements that we need from that.
I just, based on my experience with, uh, property in downtown Villarica and roofs especially, I think it can be done cheaper than that. And I, it could be done by somebody here more local than Ben Hill. Uh, I, I recommend personally that, 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 that we do that. We can always go back to Ben Hill. We have got, got this deadline for the bid. And, uh, if, if we push it, uh, that, you know, try to get the, the, uh, package out there and the bid's back and evaluated, we should, we should be able to do that. So that is, that is my recommendation.
We need a second for that then?
Well, I mean, my, my concern is just the, the cost of getting the bid packet out and the time involved. That's, that's my business. I mean, I'm, I don't have a problem with getting a second, two or three more bids on it. And I certainly don't have the experience you do, Bill, on what is, if this is reasonable cost or not. I don't have that experience.
Well, the flying the omen here from my perspective is the asbestos abatement, because I do not have any experience with that. I, I do know it's, it's certainly more involved in just getting up there and ripping the roof off. But how much of that hundred and thirty thousand or so?
Well, it's, it's, they got seventeen thousand one hundred, yeah, for asbestos abatement.
That, that is not nearly as much as I would anticipate, uh, out of the hundred and thirty.
Now, I, I want to keep in mind that the price may not necessarily be a hundred and thirty. So the base price is one oh six, okay? But then you have these add-ons. The hundred and six doesn't include the asbestos abatement. It doesn't include, um, allowances for, because you don't know how much of the roof joints are going to have to be repaired, what, what's rotted. So there's a sliding scale, if you will, uh, contingent upon what actually needs to be done. But I don't want to say, oh, it's going to, I don't want to be quoted. I'd rather you say a hundred and thirty and it'd be less than me to say a hundred thousand and it'd be, you know, more. Um, so, um, you know, we just don't know until you, until you start ripping off the roof, how much of the decking's going to have to be pla- replaced.
Yeah, I understand that for sure.
And of course, you've, you know, if you've replaced roofing, you know, it's always, so there's contingency built into this.
Do you know the square feet of roof that's there, Chris?
Uh, let's see, it's in the bid. Yeah, it's, they, they're quoting some at three thousand and some, but yeah.
Twenty-three hundred, it looks like.
Yeah.
Twenty-three hundred with no, no gable ends or anything like that. It is, it is essentially a flat roof, correct?
Uh, well, there, you, there's some images in there of the roof that, in the packet. Oh, you don't have your, like- Uh, well, there, you, there's some images in there of the roof that, and the packet. Oh, you don't have your, like-
I don't have one.
I thought, I had some extra. Here's one right here. She's got a phone. So if you look at the construction, the, uh, so if you look at that roof assessment packet, it has, um-
I don't see any images of the roof.
Was it in that packet here? Oh, it, they got left out. They're right here.
That's where that went, Chris.
That's where that other part is from.
Yeah, there's not much telling how many roofs have been put on that thing over the years.
Yeah, it, uh, definitely has more than a few. I would say several.
With my limited experience with roofing, I do know that flat roofs are more challenging than your-
They, they are a lot more challenging to keep up. They're a whole lot easier to do, but a whole lot more challenging to maintain.
I think to do right would help with your, your maintenance.
Uh, I did see the parapet wall here and, and, and the rest of it appears to be pretty much flat, probably with a one to twelve, uh, drop on it. That's, that's kinda standard. I still recommend we go get some more bids.
That's a motion, get more bids. Do I have a second on that one? I think also we need another bid on it. I'll, so I'll second that. All in favor?
I just couldn't, do we have an idea what a bid, what putting together a, a bid packet's gonna cost us?
Chris, do you have any idea?
I don't right now, but I can get that information and get it to y'all.
That's good. I mean, that's another one of my issues is time. It's just like we push everything back, push everything back, push everything back.
I mean, cause you're gonna have to give them time to respond.
Right, we, we're looking at the end of March.
And, and review the proposals and stuff.
Charlie, what, what's your concern about getting more bids or not getting more bids?
Mine is time, and I do contracts and I do requests for proposals daily, so you have to, you have to, once you put it out there, you gotta give them time to res- I mean, you have to have a certain amount of time for people to respond. And then, of course, you said you could call the meeting, you can do a call meeting to review. But then what kind of crunch is that gonna put you into meeting, making sure you're in line with this other deadline? You know, how much time are you gonna have left to say, this is what we're gonna do?
Or, and, and we could ask them if they would extend.
Extend the thirty-first of March, yeah.
If they're willing to do that. I don't know if, you know, how much the prices are gonna change that much from a material standpoint.
So Jerry, am I cor- would I be correct to say that you think we need another bid because that's just good business to get another bid? This is a vetted company that does this. And Bill, your concern is you work with or are familiar with Ben Hill and they always are high.
I am familiar with roofs also. I think it's incumbent upon us to spend our money wisely.
I, I do too.
And, and-
We spend our time wisely too.
Well, your time and my time is volunteerism. And so I work cheap. I don't get paid for this job. But I know I have worked hard for downtown for over twenty-five years.
We're really at a standstill there, right?
It looks, it, it looks like we're not gonna make a decision at all.
Yeah.
And I recommend we table this. That's right. I'm, I, I recommend we table it un- until we get more board members here, yes.
I'll second that. All in favor? All opposed?
Then it fails too.
We only got, we only got one more motion now.
Then I guess we have to vote on it.
Okay, so we need to vote on?
Whether to accept it or not.
Whether to accept it or not then. Do I have a motion to accept the bid from Ben Hill? Is that what we're?
Well, the bid is from Garland.
From Garland, yeah.
Garland.
The state approved.
Yes, a state contract.
Does, then do, do they use this process a lot? It's, can you speak to the experience you had with that? I mean, I'm open for discussion on the pros and cons of this without resorting to, I'd just like to stay with, put that back to the pros and cons of not using them. And, you know, I understand Jerry's concern with, uh, just again, again, it makes common sense to have another bid. Am I correct in assuming that Garland has gotten other bids or not? How do they decide upon Ben Hill?
Um, they, they most likely just have contractors that they deal with. But I, I, I'm not sure if they bid it out before they select one or they pick one that, um, is the best qualified for what, for what they're trying to, to accomplish. I can find that out though and get it to you, how, how they selected specifically that company.
Where are we staying?
You need a motion.
Or more board members.
Or one more board member.
Or one more board member. Need a motion for that?
Yeah.
Have a motion to table it? Do we have more, more board members?
Well, I, I guess, yeah, what we'll do is we'll get a, a time schedule for if we're gonna bid it out. And then we'll get those few questions answered about the Garland Group and then we can make a decision.
I think that, but the last motion was, wasn't it? Basically wait till we have some more board members here. That suits me fine, to have more information.
Is that a motion?
Have more information, that's the motion.
All right, have a motion for more information. Do we have a second?
A second.
All in favor? All right.
So, can, um, you all wanna set a date for the, a, a called meeting? Cause the thirtieth work?
The thirtieth.
Next Monday?
Week from today then? A week from today.
And we don't wanna prolong, oh, yeah. Yeah.
And Chris can take care of the recording for Tracy, probably for just a short week. Okay, you can handle that, can't you? All right.
So we're gonna do the thirtieth at the same time.
Okay, so the thirtieth at six fifteen here then, right?
And I'll reach out. Pin down some, make sure the board members are locked in and ready to go.
Gary, and?
Will Tom be back then or we don't know?
He'll be back in March.
Oh, he's on his sabbatical. Okay.
You might call it that.
All right.
Yeah, I'll get one to Lisa.
Okay, anything else? Welcome Center? Moving on down number three gateway signs.
Okay, hopefully this can be lot less painful. Um, we have already a bid packet for the gateway signs. This is the bid packet, I, there's one because they're not cheap. So I'll pass it around, let y'all look at it. Um, that has the specs for the signs. It has, um, proper material, the amount of signs we want. So that project is ready to go. We just need to get approval from the board to go ahead and put out that RFP, um, to start soliciting for bids. The other new business, the, the financial management thing, um, we did receive a check from the city. Is that seventy-one thousand? Uh, seventy-one thousand to go towards the, um, the gateway sign project.
How much?
Seventy-one thousand. Um, so that, um, we'll need to work on the financial management part and I'll talk about the check afterwards. But, so there's funding to go ahead and start, um, the project. Obviously, depending upon the, how, what the bids come in and how much, um, this project's gonna cost, it determines if we do that project all at once or in phases. So it might be that we do part of the signs now and then do the other part when we have more funds available. But we do have seventy-one thousand to do the first, first part. Yeah, it's ready. Yeah, that's the bid packet, yeah. Okay, yeah. Sure.
What you need from us is a approval then?
Yeah, just approval to, to move forward with that.
Just one question, Chris. Why did, uh, you choose not to put a gateway sign at, uh, South Carroll and sixty-one? Since that's one of the main drags coming in from the, the south.
You're talking about where the, uh, Social Security Administration? Um, well, these are gateway signs that are, say you have reached downtown Villarica. So it, there is one on South Carroll, but it's more in the historic district than that far down. I don't know if it's, shows up on that map or not, but there should be one, two, three, four, five gateway signs total.
There's a, a purple circle. Is that, is that what recommends the? One on South, South Carroll.
So the ones with the, uh, broken line, they're, they're red with the purple circle in the center, center? You're looking at the site plan?
I'm looking at the gateways here. There's one, two, three, four. And then there's a small purple circle right on South Carroll.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that was, so that's it. One, two, three, four, five. This one obviously won't be built because that's the Mary Lake connector, so that will be in another phase.
Yeah.
So it'll be one, two, three, four.
I got you, okay.
Yeah, it just, I don't know why we made it look different. And of course, those are just geographical points. I mean, we'll have to figure out where we have rights. Obviously, the ideal thing is put it all on properties owned by the city, but there may be a situation where, you know, we have to get an easement or something. But I think most of the places, either the city controls or, or GDOT, so.
On the, um, signs that give the businesses located in downtown Villarica, how easily are they gonna be updated?
Yeah, they'll, they'll be little individual wings, I guess you could say, and those will just come off and you can put a new one on.
Okay. So, so it is not like we can leave one up there that's been gone for two years?
No, you can take it down. You can put a blank or you could, yeah, or you can just put another, replace it with a business. Yeah, we have, we have. We haven't, um, really pushed it real hard, uh, right now, just because we were waiting to get all of that, uh, part done. Because I, I generally don't like to talk to people about stuff and then we wait six months to a year before anything, and then they forget about it, and yeah. So, uh, I've tried to wait until it's like, all right, we're ready to move on this and then we'll start lining people up. Cause that's usually the question they ask, well, when's it gonna happen? So, and I don't, you know, I'd rather not say I don't know. I'd rather say, well, we got the bids out and they're ready to go.
So we need a motion to go with a bid package in that, right, Chris?
Well, just to go ahead and, and let, yeah, let that, um, pose go out so we can go solicit bids.
All right, do we have a motion then?
Move that we, um, allow the bid packet to go out to some, um,
Oh, we don't want that.
Solicit bids.
Yeah.
Okay, have a motion. Do we have a second?
I second.
Motion to second, all in favor? All right, go down number six, new business.
All right.
Two thousand seventeen budget.
Yeah, I didn't, um, put together a budget, um, for the DDA. I get, I wanted to get the dialogue started about what that really looks like. There's gonna be, um, obviously a lot more activity this year than in previous years. Just because we'll be doing projects like the gateway signs and stuff, so there'll be, um, funds expended more, uh, I guess more often for the DDA. Um, and so I wanted to kinda get some feedback from the board about what direction they wanted to go into as far as, you know, how they wanna do that financial management part. My thought process is to get with the, um, CFO for the city, kinda help give us a framework. Um, because anytime, you know, we're gonna be dealing with, with bids and paying contractors and stuff like that, um, we really need to have some policies in place about how that happens than, you know, just bringing paperwork to meetings and being like, hey, we need to pay this pack, this pile of, um, so, you know, even for when we submit bills to be paid, that paper trail that we need to have. But I, you know, I wanted to give that, um, to the DDA to think about and see, um, is it maybe we set up a committee and they kinda put the parameters together and bring it back to the board to adopt as a policy? Is that something you would like staff just to put together, bring back to the DDA as recommendations? And then you can take the pieces that you want. You know, but I'll leave that up to, to, to the group to decide what direction, what direction you wanna give staff on that.
I personally don't have the expertise to put together a packet. I think you just know it's important to have procedures and policies. I've got a lot of confidence in Sarah and, um, in you, Chris. It's my feeling that staff should put together the policy procedures and that explain them to us.
I agree. That is where the expertise should lie anyway. We don't do the work. We just set a policy, right? We can set a policy that you do out and do, and do good.
It's a very vague policy. Those are good policies.
So that answered your question.
Well, that answers my question then. So I'll get with Sarah. Um, and another thing, and, you know, Tracy, we're gonna be obviously generating a lot more checks. Like we have a check from the city where we haven't been- Like we have a check from the city. We haven't been able to posit, cause we had to take it down to Tracy or what what Carl's something. We need to add Carl, yeah.
And then I handed it to.
Yeah, we need to add Carl, because the really, the the reason why we need Carl is because we are required to be part of the um audit for the city. And so it's helpful for us to get information to Sarah in a way that she can then turn around and give to the auditors every year, so.
The check was made out to the city of Villarica, so.
What what check? Oh, we got a new check.
Oh, a new check, okay.
They printed another check to the DDA. So yeah, it's coming to the DDA. Um, but, you know, just exactly, you know, like, how do we handle that? How do we manage that? So that that's really why we want to, you know, get whatever the policy is gonna be, so that way we're we're, we make sure uh, and the good and getting her the information she needs, um, so when it comes time to do the audit, um, I'm not getting nasty emails and stuff, cause they get a little stressful at time of the year. Um, but yeah, we will bring that back then to the DDA uh for recommendation, um, probably here in the um February meeting.
All right, any public comment?
Do we have anything on the tourism board?
That's on the.
We do. We have another agenda, yeah.
Yeah, we got a whole other thing.
Yeah, we keep them separate.
Items for future agenda? It's this one. We need to go executive session on that bill.
Yeah, I reckon so.
What, what do we need to do? Cut the mics off then or?
Yes.
Yeah, we can, yeah, pause that.
And we need to.